Good morning and welcome to the Municipality of Anchorage Assembly Public Safety Committee. We have a road call.
Mr. Constance?
Here.
Mr. Cross?
Here.
Ms. Stern?
Here.
Ms. LeFrance?
Here.
Mr. Cruz, would you?
Here.
Mr. Henderson?
Present.
Ms. Quinn-Davidson? Here, sorry about that. Mr. Rivera?
Present.
Mr. Salt?
Here.
Mr. Sweet?
Here.
Mr. Volan?
Happy to be here.
Ms. Alatell?
Here.
Well, good morning, everybody. Go ahead and get started. We have Chief Carl, our representative from BPD for our regular updates. Nelson. Thanks, son.
Yeah, Case awesome.
Okay, go ahead and introduce yourself to the people who are listening online.
Sean Case, Deputy Chief of Anchorage Department.
Excellent, Mr. Case. All right, our two items out on the agenda, first one, body cam update.
Uh, body cam updates, we have nothing slowing us down with the pace that we've been on. Still set for arbitration, still through the procurement process. Marsh was, we said we have three vendors left in the process coming up. That's scheduled, they will be coming up to do demonstrations. And then we'll kind of continue down that RFP process. That's where our body cams, any questions on that?
Camera, go ahead. Yeah, so just want to break that down a bit. So are arbitrations starting?
Uh, still scheduled, still in the process, yes.
All right, so do we have a timeframe for that?
So I gave a very broad fall before all that stuff is back. And I'm saying that very liberally because some of the things we can't control in arbitration. I mean, realistically, I expect it's going to be done much before that. But if it happens when I say much before that, then it takes longer. But it's scheduled and there's no stopping that. That's on track.
Okay, great. And then you said that the three vendors are scheduled to come up. When are those scheduled for? I don't need the exact dates, but they're through the month of March.
Yes, March.
When, can you just let us know, when will a decision be made in terms of what vendor you're going to use?
So there is a scoring process that takes place once the vendors have been up here. Based on the RFP and that can't be completed until they do their demos. And, you know, that process takes a couple of weeks. And then we can select who we want and then that's the process of purchasing.
Great, can I ask just one more question? So, um, the concern I have is getting the first quarter budget revision in on time and ensuring that we have the funding for the Department of Law required to build whatever infrastructure, whatever materials, whatever tech technology they need. And so I guess the thing that I asked last time was, you know, if we could try to the degree we can align the decision that is being made with the budget time timeframe as well. So I just, I'm continuing to encourage you and the Department of Law and the municipal manager to sort of keep that in mind and to be able to produce a request, if you will, so that we can pay it in on time. So I just want to keep that on your radar as well.
Absolutely.
And then just the last thing on the body cams. The, is there anything else that you see at this point, once the vendor is chosen, once the policy is approved, is there anything else that is going to hold us back from moving forward with training and implementation?
No, after the arbitration is complete and the policy is complete, we should be, nothing else should hold us back unless, which you just mentioned, with transferring data, there's something that we have to hold for that. But that's kind of part of the RFP process with this, is try to select a vendor that we can easily transfer data to the prosecuting entities so that that doesn't slow the process down or negatively impact prosecution cases.
And are you able to tell us who the three vendors are at this point or is that confidential?
No.
Oh, okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And thank you, Deputy Two, for being here. You had mentioned fall. Is that a target implementation date or when you expect the arbitration to be concluded?
The arbitration to be concluded with a decision so that the policy can be finalized.
So a possible implementation date might be the end of 2023 or the start of 2024?
I would say that is not outside the realm of possibilities, yes. We were hoping that we can do implementation. Well, the RFP process and selecting the vendors and the cameras and purchasing isn't going to be slowed down by the arbitration. And I believe that the purchasing of cameras in that process is actually going to be the limiting factor. Once it goes through the entire system and purchasing and getting the equipment to arrive on scene, that's probably going to take more time and be a limiting piece in the puzzle.
Got it, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Do we have any questions regarding body cams?
Paul? Okay, so just to sound clear, the projected timeline for arbitration to be finished is in fall. Sometime thereafter, implementation. What is the projected timeline for us to have all the equipment and the software, everything we need to go in, the actual product?
Our goal is to be live with cameras on the street by the end of the year.
Okay, thanks.
So I just wanted to show that the concern that I have here is that if everything falls into place, if the, you know, if the arbitration finishes and the vendor is chosen and training begins and products are in the, and materials are purchased and outs. But we can't transfer data and we don't have the infrastructure to even transfer data from the Police Department to the Department of Law because we don't have the right software, because we don't have the right storage, because they can't manipulate any information. I think we've had this conversation a lot. And so what's been really concerning to me is that we've been holding off on this because we don't know what the vendor is. And so that's a very real concern, that if all this goes into place, then they can be out there on the street and they can be, they can be filling all of this, but we can't use any of it. And so that's a real, real concern. So I'm trying to figure out a step that we can take to ensure that that funding and that process is in place. Because if the Department of Law comes back and says, oh my gosh, now we need a million dollars to be able to purchase all these things and it's going to take us a year to buy them, to train people, to implement it, now we're another year out. And so we've known for a long time that we're getting to do these cameras. I'm frustrated because I think it's, I think that there is difference between these vendors, but I cannot imagine that we don't have a lot of information about what it's going to entail and why we can't begin to build that infrastructure now. And this isn't really, the Police Department, it isn't really Department of Law, it's sort of the administration. It's sort of like them taking this seriously and taking the lead on this to ensure that all of these things are in place. It's not our role to make sure that the infrastructure in the Department of Law is ready for it. It's the administration's role. And so that's where I think maybe this conversation really needs to be had with Cole Case and what role that they're going to play to ensure this is all moving forward. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any other questions for Deputy Chief Case regarding body cams before we move on? Thank you. MIT physician updates, please.
We have all the physicians approved and we're ready to post for four positions. For four clinician want positions. Thank you for giving us money for that.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't think Sean or Deputy Chief Case, you were at the last meeting, but Ms. Alatell did bring up the fact that, as you know, there's been this long running intent by the Assembly and former administrations to implement the mobile crisis team in the fire department and also to support the work of MIT, which is placed in the Police Department. And in our last budget discussions and over the last six to nine months, the intent was to go 24/7 at AFD and also to support a pilot program using one-time funding of increasing MIT, which I believe is what some of the items coming before us are. Ms. Alatell mentioned that she would be very hesitant to pass that and I'm with her. I can't support it until we get the administration to follow its commitment to work to implement 24/7 AFD service. It's been going on for months and they're just refusing to do it and asking us to build a program in another department. That was, our agreement was only based on the fact that we were doing them simultaneous. So I want you to know that we support you and we support your program, but the administration has made this impossible for us and they're trying to kill the AFD program. So I won't be able to support it, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Can I just ask a question, support, which is exactly what you're?
There's an item on our agenda to support funding for an MIT position, which I presume is part of building up that program. So what they're doing is they're refusing to implement the AFD side of things, which as we know, experts have all recommended that that's the better route. But they're asking us for funding, on the other hand, to build up the police side of things. So we, I think, in an effort to compromise, said, you know what, we'll do both. Which is a compromise because really the best, according to all experts, is AFD. And so we said, we'll do both. And now they're not doing AFD and they're moving forward with APD and they're asking us for funding at March 7 meeting. So I just want you to know, I do support the program. That's why we reached that compromise, but they're just making it impossible for us and they're, they're trying to ruin the AFD program, it's very clear. So I'm sorry you're caught in the middle of it. And we hope that we'll get some movement from them to move forward this overall program that benefits APD.
Thanks for our clarification.
Are you next, here, Ms. Alatell, Ms. Volan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So Ms. Quinn-Davidson covered most of it. The money that are on the agenda are pass-through funding specifically for MIT. And I think what would be helpful context before that item comes to support a body on Tuesday night is what is the time horizon for accepting those funds? And then, you know, I'm interested in knowing if we can somehow utilize this opportunity as a resource to maybe catalyze action on the other side. So I don't know if Deputy Two Case, that you could go take a look and maybe provide us a little bit more information around the timing of those funds that are proposed to come into the municipality for MIT. And then if you have the classifications done for your clinicians, it would be, I guess, helpful to know, you know, if similar classifications have been approved for AFD. I know we're still stuck on the EMT question. But it's, I believe when we created this dual approach, that the classifications for the clinicians were going to remain the same for both departments. And I guess the extent we can make sure that that piece, if it's done for APD, is also done for AFD and then that can leave this other issue of the EMT out on our to-do list of things to continue to reconcile. So I'm trying to still, I agree with Ms. Quinn-Davidson, but I'm still trying to think of ways we can catalyze moving us forward. I think that we really are going to end up missing an amazing opportunity to take a look at these two programs in tandem and compare the data and really strategize on a robust program with great community results because there's just a lack of will to carry out the assembly direction on the count and CTE. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. If it's okay, I'd like to ask Ms. Houser a question since you're here and if you don't mind coming up to the microphone. So as I think you've heard in our prior committee meeting and this one, there's been a lot of conversation for months revolving around this concept of having an integrated approach with the Mobile Crisis Team under AFD and Mobile Intervention Team under APD. And we've had presentations, we've looked at what Fairbanks has done to be really innovative and sort of studying best practices. At one of her last meetings with us, I made it really clear to the former acting municipal attorney, Ms. Christensen, that I wanted her to brief her successor on this issue. So my question for you is, how's the administration or your predecessor briefed you on this issue, this potential barrier to implementation 24/7 of the Mobile Crisis Team and the need for that job reclassification?
Ms. Houser, if you please, just give your name and title for the record, thank you.
Thank you very much. My name is Anne Houser, I'm the acting municipal attorney. At least very recently appointed and I'm very happy to be here and very happy to meet all of you and I thank you for all of your service to the city. You've asked me whether I was briefed on the issue presented here now and the answer is not as much as I would like to be. I do understand that there is a sort of conflict with the fire department and the police department. I spoke with Chief Case. I also spoke with Monica Ellington about it. What I would like to do is to have some more conversation, robust conversation with the Assembly to find out what solutions you guys have so that they can be presented to the administration. And that is really what I'm looking forward to doing. So I would encourage you, and I learned a little bit from Ms. Quinn-Davidson just a minute ago, and I really feel like there can be some, something accomplished here. And I don't think it should, I think it should be worked out quickly so that the public issue can be addressed. And I think that should be of most importance. So thank you. And did you ask me a second question? I'm sorry if I?
No, that's it, thank you. I appreciate that answer.
Thank you.
Thank you, do we have any follow-up, excuse me, do we have any follow-up questions for either Deputy Chief Case, Attorney Houser regarding MIT position updates? Yes, please, Austin.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess just sort of maybe back, you know, Ms. Alatell said and Ms. Volan too, we would like to be able to approve that item on Tuesday. And so, you know, the question for the administration for months has been, where are we implementing AFD's Mobile Crisis Team 24/7 as was funded? Correct me if I'm wrong, folks, as of July 1, 2022, or was it even earlier than that? Okay, everyone's trying to remember. But, and so, yeah, I guess to the extent, I know you're just coming on board. Sean has a lot of background, he knows a lot about it, could probably help fill you in. Ms. Stamboski and Ms. Christensen knew a lot about it, but they're both gone. Certainly may, can be a resource, may help Blair and Amy figure out how we could classify these physicians so that we could have both programs. So I think it's possible. Our feeling has been and what we have heard is that the mayor doesn't support it. So I think that will be your next challenge. But it would be helpful to have some resolution by Tuesday so that we can actually support this program, but also support a program that's been really effective and popular with residents and helps APD. So anyway, I know there's a lot going on, but the more you can do by Tuesday, the better.
Thank you, anybody else? I'd like to add that, you know, both of these projects, it does seem like they've been languishing and taken a long time to get off the ground. It's very unfortunate because I know that, I know that our departments want them to see the value in them and they see that this is a magnificent benefit to our community. It's painful because our constituents keep asking us, why isn't this going? Where is this going? You know, I'm working on it is sadly not an adequate excuse anymore. Our emails are full of individuals that are frustrated, these aren't moving forward. And I think we owe them a responsibility since, yes, some of these have been funded for quite some time, but just seem to be languishing. Any other questions for either Carl or Houser, excuse me, Chief Case or Houser before we set them free and move on to AFD? Oh, yes. Captain, Mr. Cross. And I'll tell you what, Cameron, if you don't mind, I'll go to Constance and then Cameron. Thank you.
Hey, Chief Case, I just want to take thanks to your team. One of those things where, you know, I have a broken car lock and I take it into the shop and as soon as I get there, it works just fine. I had a parking issue in front of a business in the downtown and it's been ongoing. And your officer shows up and of course, it's the one day when nobody's there. And they go back the next day and nobody's there. And, but still, your officer did some direct outreach to the person who was parking inappropriately and causing conflicts with neighbors. And just want to say really thanks to your team for, you know, getting out there and doing the detailed work that you do every day.
Anything we can do?
Thank you. Cameron?
So Deputy Chief, I guess I just want to follow up on what Mr. Cross just said. Is it your understanding that your department is in support of mobile body cameras and it's not something that you and your department are supporting and want to see happen? Is that, is that, is that a true statement?
That's a true statement. We support body cams and I would like to color outside the lines a little bit and reassure you a little bit more, but unfortunately, when I reassure a little bit more, then we have things that hold up and it doesn't work out. But we, we want body cams, we're going to be able to implement body cams. We support the program.
Thank you. And Ms. Alatell, thanks for being here and I know you're coming up next, but I know you're really new, but are you able to speak to that as well? Is it your understanding that the Department of Law is supportive of body cameras and is willing to do all that you can to move this project forward as soon as you can?
I hesitate to answer that in the affirmative or negative just because I don't, I have not been here long enough to hear everyone speak on the issue. So, but I would like to get you the answer right away so that we can support this program one way or tell you that you work something out in a different way.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing that. I guess I would just say that I, similar to the previous comment about the Mobile Crisis Team going 24 hours and MIT working together, I have the same fear, I have the same fear that, that, that behind the scenes there are some folks who don't support mobile body cameras and that's one of the reasons why we have not been able to move on these. And so I think we need to really get clarity on that. Thank you.
Excellent. Any other questions for Deputy Chief Case before we move on to our AFD regular update? Thank you, appreciate it. Chief Cross, come in, have a seat and join us at table. Thank you, introduce yourself, it looks like you have a PulsePoint briefing.
Good morning, yes sir, thank you for the opportunity. I'm Doug Shragi, I'm the Anchorage Fire Chief. If it would indulge the Chair, I have some postcards to hand out regarding PulsePoint. My plan for today is to provide a brief overview and an update on the implementation of PulsePoint. PulsePoint is a public service that we implemented early in February, which was, among other things, American Heart Month. And for those that might not be familiar with it, I have a 90-second video that I'd like to display if you would.
As a call is placed to emergency dis- This is Joel. He just suffered a sudden cardiac arrest. He isn't the only one. Today, a thousand people in the United States will have the same experience. Time is now critical. As a call is placed to emergency dispatch, the clock continues to tick. Emergency responders are several minutes away. Unfortunately, several minutes can be too long. For every minute Joel goes unaided, his chance of survival decreases by 10%. Fortunately, Joel lives in a PulsePoint-connected community. PulsePoint is integrated with his community's emergency dispatch. The moment Joel's emergency call came in, a PulsePoint alert went out, connecting nearby CPR-trained volunteers and AEDs to his location. Mead Scott, an off-duty firefighter outrunning errands, and Donna, a financial planner working next door. Because they were nearby and quickly alerted, they're now able to provide life-saving care until emergency responders arrive. That initial care made all the difference. This is Joel, he's a sudden cardiac arrest survivor. Armed with PulsePoint, any volunteer can help save a life. Become a life-saving volunteer and download PulsePoint today.
Thank you for indulging me by showing that video. I'm very proud that Anchorage is a PulsePoint-connected community. We now have PulsePoint fully functioning throughout the municipality from Inkluna all the way to Ortes and includes residents and firefighters in all of our communities, including Gerwood, Shugak, Peters Creek and Anchorage and Ewora River, of course. PulsePoint is currently in almost 5,000 communities around the United States and the communities that have implemented PulsePoint have seen significant increases, not only in their sudden cardiac arrest survival rates and the quality of outcomes, but also in the level of community engagement. So people that have downloaded this free app onto their phones get insight into the activities of the Anchorage Fire Department, the Shugak Fire Department and the Gerwood Fire Department. And they can select to be notified if a cardiac arrest occurs in their vicinity. It is not unlike if you were to go into the Fifth Avenue Mall, observe somebody collapsing from cardiac arrest, standing up and shouting as loud as you can, this person needs CPR. And that's what PulsePoint does. It works automatically in the background. So as soon as the 911 call comes in and the location is validated and the call taker identifies the basic cause, PulsePoint sends out their work to all the people within a quarter mile of that incident. It's so fast that the alerts oftentimes go out before the fire state, the fire personnel in the fire stations are notified. This is key to improving our cardiac arrest survival rate because it fills the gap from the time when the arrest occurs and when EMS can arrive, which is usually six to eight minutes. And only CPR along with an AED is proven to be most effective at saving lives from a sudden cardiac arrest in the first few minutes of an arrest. A couple more points. PulsePoint will only notify citizen responders or first responders in cardiac arrests in public locations. This is for privacy and safety reasons. However, your off-duty firefighters, firefighters in all three fire departments in the municipality can be notified of a cardiac arrest in private residences. So that gives us two layers of protection. So far, for the, since we implemented it the first week of February through yesterday, we have 1,127 users. We have 80 verified responders, or rather, verified responders are off-duty firefighters. In February, there were 201 cardiac arrest calls. 177 alerts went out. There were fewer alerts than there were cardiac arrest calls because we exclude some kinds from notifications. And there have been 488 notifications of other types of calls. So one of the nice things about PulsePoint is it can also notify people on the hillside, for example, as soon as the 911 center takes a call for a wildfire, PulsePoint will receive that and push out that notification to people in the vicinity. Well, actually to everybody in the municipality. So they can quickly go to their phone and see the location and then can begin to make informed decisions about what they should do. And that is the extent of my presentation and I'd be happy to take any questions.
Any questions? Yes, Cameron?
Thank you, Chief. So one of the things that seems are vital in, in allowing this program to be effective is a significant number of people who are prepared to respond to emergencies. So can you talk to us about what we're doing as a city to create opportunities for people to get that kind of training and to learn CPR and to, to make sure that, that there's a sufficient number of citizens in this city who are able to respond?
Yes, sir. Member of the press, thank you for the question through the Chair. That's, that is a great question. Let me make a couple of points. Anchorage as a community is ahead of the national average for, for bystander CPR. And that's a little bit of an artificial metric because the reason our, our metric is so high, about 70% of the cardiac arrest calls that we take involves somebody doing CPR on scene before EMS arrives. The reason that number is so high is because our dispatchers are trained to teach somebody over the phone how to do hands-only CPR. In reality, if it weren't for that, the number would probably be around 10%. Our AED usage compared to the state and national average is as much lower also, is around 10%. And so PulsePoint will help to improve those. The point being, somebody can learn hands-only CPR through instruction over the phone. We obviously prefer that people take a CPR class and know, learn and know CPR. We are in the process of developing a CPR instructional program that will be taught at all of the fire stations and other work sites in Anchorage by, by on-duty firefighters. We're in the process of researching mannequin equipment and, and developing a curriculum. So our hope is, just like a resident or a citizen can come to the fire station and get their car seat examined for proper installation, they can also spend 30 minutes in our CPR.
Thank you, Chief. That's exciting to hear. I, I guess I would just encourage you to, there are many, many organizations in this city that, that both need and in some cases provide CPR training. So I would really encourage us to partner as much as we can to ensure that there's a large network of organizations that are, that are involved in this and, and so that we're not duplicating those services. But, but it's exciting to hear that there's an effort to increase the number of people who are trained so that this, this program can be as effective as possible. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Constance.
Yeah, thanks. I highly recommend members to download the app and turn it on. I found that there are two different sets of functions. One is the CPR function. And I believe that is automatically turned on when you sign in to the Anchorage Fire Department area. But as policymakers, the other interesting function is you can opt into notifications for responses for other calls that the FSB is responding to. And so it effectively provides a notification system similar to what used to exist when we had a scanner setup where you could actually kind of track what's going on. Unless, of course, it doesn't have police activity, so fire response. And so it is robust and it paints a really clear picture of what's happening in town. So I highly recommend you download and check it out. But you have to opt in to those other notifications.
Thank you, Mr. Constance. Anybody else? I think it's a great program. You know, having been born and raised here, you know, people don't realize, we do realize just how rural and how, you know, whether it's on the hillside or whether it's back in the river valley out in Chugak, how many homes and those, you know, demographics, typically older individuals that are more prone towards cardiac issues, just that they're distanced from immediate services. So, you know, bringing in not just trained individuals, but even retired individuals who have that training, who live in the neighborhoods and making sure that we can reduce our response times is excellent. So the more I thought about it, I hope that we utilize it to its maximum potential. If there's nothing else, Chief Sharagi, really appreciate it. Thank you so much. Did you have any, before I let you go, do we have any other questions, Chief Sharagi, regarding any other AFD issues before we all move on? Suzanne?
Do you know, Mr. Chair, one? Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, Mr. Constance. Suzanne's going to speak and then you'll, I'll let you follow up. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Chief Sharagi, for being here and all your work. I just wanted to ask a quick question about the status of posting and recruitment for the Public Information Officer that was funded through AFD a couple of months ago, I think. Thanks.
Thank you for the question, Member LaFrenz, through the Chair. We have spent some time since the beginning of the year crafting a position description based on other public information officers in the municipality. And we are waiting for the position to be created so that we can recruit for it. And we appreciate your support.
Great. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Constance.
Thank you, Chief. Last year, we had lots of conversation about addressing overtime issues. And I think we made a funding effort to get in front of it. And the year's closed and we're coming up on Q1. I don't know if you have this information on the top of your head, but I'm wondering if you might get that, the overtime issue from us.
I didn't catch the last part of the question, the actual substance of the question.
Sorry. I'm, I'm just curious if you can give us information or maybe get back to us with how the effort in, as the year ended, I mean, are we okay on the overtime? What's your budget looking like? No, that overtime question has been an ongoing concern.
Thank you for the question, Member Constance, through the Chair. The preliminary indications are, of course, the books are still being closed on 2022. But the preliminary information we have is that, that with respect to overtime, we finished under budget. Altogether, we finished the year a little bit over budget. But with respect to overtime, we finished under, under budget. Two important things to observe. One is 2022 compared to 2021, we reduced our overall overtime related to sick leave usage by 35%. And secondly, this time last year, we were closing fire and EMS companies at night in order to reduce our overtime spend. So the amount that we mitigated between January 1st and mid-March, when we discontinued the closure of companies, we had curtailed about $330,000 in overtime. So while we finished 2022 under budget for overtime, we're gonna, we don't have access to that, the nighttime closures again this year. So we'll have to find a way to make up that roughly $330,000.
Yeah, thanks. I am strongly in support of coming up with alternative means than closing equipment. Thank you very much for that report.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you very much.
All right. We'll be moving on to the Office of Emergency Management for regular updates. And it looks like, oh, I'm sorry, Department of Law. You're right. I skipped one. I apologize. Department of Law updates. And I, Suzanne? Susan at Elster? Right?
You want to come up?
Monica?
Okay.
Go ahead and introduce yourself with the record.
Sure. My name is Monica Elton and I'm the acting municipal prosecutor. And I've been with the municipality through several administrations. And I just wanted to give an overview of what we do at the prosecutor's office. We have, so I have a brief PowerPoint here just showing what we do, just to give an overview so that as you all are responding to constituent questions about body more cameras or about anything else. I know in the past, there have been questions about what we, what the prosecutors do in terms of bail, criminal records, that kind of thing. I just wanted to give you an overview so we can go ahead and start. So in the Department of Law of the municipality, there's two divisions. There's a civil division and a criminal division. The criminal division is also known as the prosecutor's office. And we are located on the second floor here in City Hall. And I'll tell you more about what we do. So the under-state statute, crimes are classified in misdemeanors and felonies. All the felonies in the state of Alaska are prosecuted by the State of Alaska District Attorney's Office. They have 13 offices around the state and their office is over on the, across the street from the Bodie Courthouse. We, our, our city code mirrors the misdemeanors in the state code. So we prosecute all of the misdemeanors that occur in the municipality, inside the boundaries of the municipality of Anchorage, prosecuted by Anchorage Police. So for instance, there's also airport police, there's UAA police, there's railroad police, J-Bear police. If they have misdemeanors, the municipality does not prosecute those. Those go to the state DA's office. But we handle all the ones that are referred by Anchorage Police Department. So we work very closely. And as you'll see, we work with GCR, with the police officers. But we are an Anchorage Police Department only and are obviously within the boundaries of the municipality. So if anybody, so I think sometimes there's a misunderstanding about felonies or, or big amounts of crime or murder cases, and those are not what we handle. We handle the misdemeanors that occur in the boundaries that are prosecuted by, that are forwarded by Anchorage Police. Next slide, please. I wanted to talk briefly about the different steps of a criminal case and so that there's some awareness. A criminal case begins with either an arrest or a citation or a summons. And that's on the left of this slide. And if somebody is arrested, then they, and if they are, they do not make bail, then they are set for a court date the following day called an arraignment. And at an arraignment, a judge looks to find, find out and determine whether probable cause exists for the charge and whether, and what the, what the bail conditions should be. If there is no arrest at the scene, so for instance, in a DUI, there might be an initial arrest, but then a release on bail. And if they're given an order and conditions of release form, they have to come back to an arraignment at a later date. Or for instance, the shoplifting, those types of crimes, they come back for an arraignment at a later date. And that arraignment happens at the courthouse where a judge looks for a probable cause and looks to see what the, or assess the bail conditions. Then there is a phase of the criminal case called the pre-trial phase where we are taking the evidence that given to us by Anchorage Police Department and giving it to the defense attorney and trying to determine the evidentiary strength of the case. We might make an offer to resolve the case at that time. And that pre-trial phase lasts a number of months typically. It's not required to, but typically it does. And then the defense, the defendant and the defense attorney together decide whether they want to resolve the case or whether they want to take the case to a jury trial. Misdemeanors in the state of Alaska, including the ones that we prosecute, have a, the defendant has a right to a jury trial and a jury of six people. Felonies have a jury of 12, misdemeanors have a jury of six. And so our trials, if they choose to go to jury trial, typically last about three to four days in front of a jury of six. And our attorneys are prosecuting those and performing those jury trials. Then if they are found guilty at trial, then the case proceeds to sentencing, which might happen immediately or it might happen after a delay for a number of reasons. Next slide, please. These are all the, typically what our week looks like. So I'll talk about how many attorneys we have, but these are all of the hearings that we cover in a typical week. You're not going to be quizzing on this. I know that the type is small, but this is what our weekly schedule looks like. We have arraignments every day at nine o'clock. We have change of plea and bail hearings every day at 10 o'clock. We have jury trials Tuesday through Friday. That's not every week. It could be, some weeks we have, have no jury trials. But at least there's one attorney, sometimes two, covering each of these hearings every single week. So we are very busy. We have, the arraignments in the mornings are for people who are out of custody and are out on a conditions of release and they've been told to come back. The arraignments at one o'clock are the people that have gotten arrested the previous day. And so we have spent all morning screening those cases. And we go to the Anchorage Jail courtroom down at the end of Fourth Avenue and do an arraignment for those folks who are in jail at time. Then every day in the afternoon, we are doing change of pleas. And then we have some of our planning hearings throughout the week also that, that I and the other supervisors attend. Next slide, please. This is, I wanted to show the two different units in our prosecutor's office. The general trial unit is the gray one here. There's a deputy municipal prosecutor position, five attorneys and four legal secretaries. That unit typically handles DUIs. The first and second DUI, under state statute and municipal code, which is mirrored, are misdemeanors. And then there's a third DUI within 10 years. That goes to the state because that's a felony within 10 years. So we are prosecuting first and second DUIs. And nationwide, we're the state with some of the highest level of sentencing, mandatory minimum sentencing for DUIs. And there is evidence that shows that that mandatory minimum sentencing does reduce recidivism in DUIs. So we are doing a lot of DUIs and keeping the roads safe. And then we're also prosecuting a lot of shoplifting. And then we also prosecute non-DV assaults, bar fights, that kind of thing. And sometimes, you know, stranger disputes in our general trial unit. Then if you jump to the right of the slide, the domestic violence unit is a unit that existed, but it did not have a separate deputy until Mayor Bronson appointed me in 2021. And the domestic violence unit is, has positions for four attorneys. And then we have some extra support staff. One of those attorneys is funded by the alcohol tax. And one of our, and our legal clerk is funded by the alcohol tax. So those are positions that are directly affected by the alcohol tax. And our domestic violence cases, we do assaults, a lot of assaults. We do criminal mischief, which is breaking things when the victim is a member of your family, a member of your household, that's a domestic violence offense, or someone you have a romantic relationship with. We do breaking restraining orders, which is unfortunately very common. And also the, another very common crime that we have in the domestic violence unit is interfering with a report of DV. And that's when somebody's trying to call for help and the offender either breaks their phone or throws their phone out into the snow or something like that. We see that, that's very common. The DV attorneys are all specially trained and right now, they are all practicing more than 10 years. In the middle column, we have a, I put a blue column here. And these are the people that support both of those units. So we have one attorney that's assigned specifically to motions and appeals, one attorney that's assigned specifically to therapeutic courts, and one attorney that's cross-designated at the U.S. Attorney's Office of the Department of Justice. And they are special assignments. We also have support staff positions that support both departments, like our weekend arraignment secretary, people who do file intake, payroll, victim contacts, that sort of thing. We also have two EP officers who's- We also have two APD officers whose desks are in our unit here in City Hall. They are our domestic violence compliance officers. And they are specially tasked with making sure that domestic violence abusers are staying away from the victims and that they're bail, they're complying with their bail conditions. So they appear at the homes of victims and make sure their abusers aren't there, continuing to abuse them when they've been court ordered to stay away if they have an open case. They also check on people who are out on third party custodian and they make sure people are within their third party custodians. So those two are very effective. And they, they find violators a lot. Because a lot of times people go to court, then they go back home and they, they ignore the court orders once they're out of the courthouse door. So our APD officers are very valuable and are able to check on, kind of do random spot checks. They also, APD also helps us with copies of restraining orders and get copies of jail calls. Because all the jail calls are recorded and all of the, a lot of domestic violence offenders will call their victims from jail. And despite messages, as soon as you pick up the phone in the jail saying this will be recorded, they ignore that and continue to abuse them, intimidate them, threaten them. And it's all recorded and we prosecute all that. Next slide, please. This is a summary of, you may have seen this before, of the Alaska Victimization Survey, but out of 100 women who reside in the state of Alaska, 48% have, 48 women out of 100 have experienced intimate partner violence. 41% have experienced sexual violence. And 58% have experienced intimate partner violence, sexual violence, or both. And this is just a statistic that we keep in mind a lot since this is statewide, but it also affects what we do here in Anchorage. We are a hub community and many of the offenders and the victims that we deal with are coming in and out of the city. They might be residing here for a long time, they might be visiting and experience violence here. They might be experiencing violence elsewhere and flee to Anchorage. So we work a lot with some of the state resources as well. Next slide, please.
Ms. Quinn Davidson? Me?
Yeah.
And then I know Constance did, but he wanted to wait.
I just have, I think maybe a few more.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair. And I was wondering if you keep statistics on how many of these situations are related to, there's alcohol abuse or substance abuse involved in these domestic violence situations?
We do, we keep track of alcohol. And, and we can get numbers on how many are alcohol related, but a large amount, a very, very large amount.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. That number, those numbers you shared, could you go back to the last slide, Dana? Are, are just staggering. It's so wild to think that half of women on war are experiencing sexual assault or violence. So I just want to take a minute to focus on that and.
Yeah, it's staggering.
Yeah, just say that, you know, this is just an epidemic in our state. It's certainly a problem elsewhere, but you know, Mr. Cross, Mr. Peterson, Ms. LaFrance and I were in June of last week and we saw Senator McCowsey speak. And she said, you know, we don't want to be 49th and 50th on all of these things, you know, like ability to handle sexual violence claims. And anyway, maybe on those we'd be number one in all the bad ways. But I wanted to just tie this to the alcohol tax and say that this is really why, when I keep harping and other members keep harping on prevention, like it's so important, and I know our community cares about this, to be focusing on these programs that prevent from an early age to the childhood sexual assault and domestic violence. Because if we can empower women to help them avoid situations like this, it's, it's just so meaningful. So I really, I really hope the administration will continue to improve on getting those prevention dollars out because it's big. And then you can answer this after your presentation, but I know you've been in this active role for, or are you, you're acting prosecutor?
Yes, I'm acting prosecutor.
For a little while. And so did Ms. Stanley, I just looked her up, she went, did she go to the state?
Mm-hmm.
And so was that just, I mean, we're just losing so many employees in the Department of Law. And so I guess I'd be interested, thank you for stepping up, but maybe Ms. Helsner, is that how I pronounced your name? Okay, maybe Ms. Helsner, as a side note, could just fill us in on how many employees were missing at the Department of Law, if you know that yet? And if there's anything the Assembly can do, I know we just increased pay, but we increased pay consistent with the increase the state did, and the state was already ahead. So we're still behind the state. And I don't know if it's a pay issue or just a general workforce issue or Bronson issue, but all of those together makes for kind of a swirling, bad situation. So if there's anything we can do, and if you know the vacancy rate, that'd be helpful. Thank you, a little off topic.
I don't have our vacancy rate right now. I know that we have, we had several attorneys leave and go to the state in the fall. And not all of those positions have been filled, but a few have. And the 20% pay raise was huge in getting some of those candidates into those positions. So that, that is huge. We are still behind the state. We just had another attorney today, I guess this week is his last week, he's going to the state DA's office. Sometimes our attorneys at the municipality, after honing their skills doing misdemeanors, they want to move on to bigger cases. So he's going to go to the state to do felonies and to do, focus on sex crimes. And he's got excellent skills. So that's something that is normal in normal attrition. But yeah, our pay scale is behind the state attorney pay scale. Another thing that's going to be huge for us is because we hire a lot of lawyers coming out of law school, is the change that the Supreme Court in the Alaska Bar Association just made to lower the bar exam score. They just changed the score, the cutoff score for Alaska. And until now, we have, law students have looked at the, it's been public, but the cutoff scores for all of the states. And so law students outside of the state have been seeing that the Alaska cutoff score for the bar exam is a great deal higher than any other state. And so as of this week, that has changed and we've come in line with the other states. So kind of it's been a psychological, it's been a publicity nightmare that law students from all over the country have seen that it's so much harder to get to practice here when the truth is, we would love them to come here, but they've had this kind of psychological block in the publicity. So hopefully that'll be a great recruiting tool for federal state agencies and for us as well. So that's something that has just changed in the last week.
Can I follow up? I'll try to be quick. I find it hard to believe, just as a lawyer who's practiced in California and really competitive states, that Alaska had the highest standard of any state.
Yeah, it did.
Are you sure that's true, that it's almost never happened?
It was once when the, when they changed it to the universal bar exam about five years ago.
Interesting.
They, we were the highest among any state and 10 points higher than any other state.
So we're number one in some good ways.
Well, but we weren't because it was scaring Washington's away. So we fixed it.
It's good to have good attorneys. Anyway, I know, thank you. So if you know the vacancy rate, if, if not, it's okay, we can deal with it later. I guess personally, I would entertain, I would entertain continuing to raise attorney salaries so that we're not losing, I understand some people want to go because they want to be something different. And that's hard to stop. But I've heard of other people who are about to leave the new attorney's office and I'm, I'm just worried that if there's anything we can do, the Assembly, to keep, keep you guys, please let us know.
Thank you, Mr. Constance. You're still in the queue till the end, she has two more slides to go. Are you fine waiting or do you want to make a comment now? Find a way. All right, thank you. Oh, Anne, please, thank you.
Okay, I just wanted to address some of your concerns. And I, I would like you to know that one of my priorities is to preserve what we've got in this very excellent department of law that we have, not excluding Monica and her team. We have 10 attorneys right now, including myself. And we also, this isn't several. And we have one hearing officer, so he's also a attorney, so that would be 11. We did lose a few people. We're losing one this week, unfortunately. But we're cognizant of that. I'm going to be scrutinizing the budget here. That's one of the plans I have in the term leading today. We're going to try to figure out how to fill those vacancies. We actually posted, just in the two weeks that I've been here, we posted something through Bar Association and talking to Monica. Apparently she was successful in getting an intern starting in May. So it's a real issue. And what I'm trying to do is, is preserve this wonderful culture that we have to the extent that that's possible and to build this department so that you all know that whatever's coming out of our department is something you feel you can rely on and that you've got that confidence. And right now, we've brought that team and I just want to make sure we keep them. So thank you for that interest and.
Would you just tell us how many positions there are? So there are 11 filled, how many are vacant?
So I understand, and I'm going back a little in memory, so the summer may be different, that I think there was 18 or 19 attorneys at one time. And the advantage there is that you can pull counsel on cases so that the entire run doesn't fall alone on one attorney. And so that is a significant offset from what we've got now. But we're talking as a department as to how those resources, those resources should best be utilized. And I'm getting all that feedback from the attorneys directly. And, and I, it's, it's a priority, so.
Thank you.
Ms. Helsner, please continue.
All right, I, my next couple of slides, this one is about our total cases that we prosecute every year. So the blue is the general trial pieces and the orange is the domestic violence cases. And it gives you a total. So per year since 2019, it's been steadily decreasing and that's a trend that goes from prior to 2019 as well. But our typical year is about 6,000 to 8,000 cases per year total. And over the last few years, the domestic violence cases have been 2,000 to 3,000. We can do the next slide. These are just some fun facts that I wasn't quite sure how to fit in elsewhere. We are the largest prosecution in the state that's focused solely on domestic violence. There's 10 attorneys at the Anchorage District Attorney's Office that are in a joint unit with sexual assault, so many of them handle sexual assault cases as well. But our five attorneys here are the largest prosecution that focuses on domestic violence. We also work with three therapeutic courts in the Anchorage Courts, Veterans Court, Mental Health Court, and Wellness Court. Anchorage is a national model for therapeutic courts for Veterans Court and Mental Health Court. Our Wellness Court is also extremely effective. But we are the first Veterans Court in the country here in Anchorage, in the Anchorage District Court. And that was 15 to 20 years ago that started. And it's been solid and, and very important and very effective ever since. So through these therapeutic courts, we are working, not necessarily with the MIT CIT team because they are, they work with us some, but that's mostly kind of at the scene. This is more like the justice consequences months later from what happens at, at a first scene of the crime. So, so we have a specially trained attorney that works with these courts and they're very effective. We are a very rehabilitation-focused prosecution office. We deal with a lot of first-time offenders. Many of our first-time offenders receive a chance to do a therapeutic program, to stay away from their victims, to do some work in their lives and not offend again. And then we agree to dismiss the case after a year. That's a common agreement that we make for first-time offenders. And even for people who do continue to offend after that, they don't always have active jail time as part of their sentence. They often have a large amount of suspended jail time. And so that is a, that's just a focus that our office has, especially when we're working with misdemeanors. We are, our focus is not to kind of lock up everybody for the rest of their lives or to even have the collateral consequences of a conviction for the rest of their life. We are, our focus is to hold people accountable and to intervene in a way that prevents further recidivism. We also, in our office, notify victims of times personally by phone. We also notify them by mail or email or text message. For every day, we have one staff member whose job is the previous day to call every victim in the cases that are on for the following day. That's 3,000 calls per year that she makes. And so that's a service that we are providing to victims. It's also a constitutional requirement under the Victims' Rights Act in the Alaska Constitution that victims are required to be notified and to be given information about their rights. So that's something that we do constantly, all year round, every day. We're making calls, making those calls and reaching out to those victims for their input and for their involvement. We also have some staff members that provide our bail conditions to Anchorage Police Department every day. So for instance, the people that are getting arraigned today, if a judge is telling them, do not have contact with this victim and tonight, in the middle of the night, an APD patrol officer pulls over somebody and the victim is in the car, that police officer will have access through dispatch to our bail conditions to know that that victim is not allowed to be with them. And then that defendant will get arrested tonight. So we are constantly updating our conditions and making sure that APD has access to our conditions so that these bail conditions, especially in the domestic violence cases, are enforced. And then we also, I wanted to let the Assembly know that the vast majority of our cases, the defendants are qualified as indigent under state statute. And that means that they get appointed counsel. And so our appointed indigent defense counsel that we go up against for the defense in the municipal cases is a contract with Denali Law Group. And then, so we are seeing the same defense attorneys in our cases over and over again. And we also have another contract that is if Denali Law Group has a conflict, then it goes to, there's a solo practitioner attorney in town. And so those contracts are ones that the Department of Law administers and that we end up working with those defense counsel a lot. On the state side, the state has the public defender agency. They don't handle our cases. Our cases are under these, basically the Denali Law Group is like the public defender for the municipality. And then there's also sometimes there's a conflict with our conflict attorney. And so we also have some other contracts with individual attorneys for individual cases that are very minor funding-wise, but kind of case by case. So that, that's kind of an overview of what our department does. I just wanted to kind of provide this so that some of the new Assembly members and the public can have an overview of what it is that, that we are doing in our prosecution every day.
Thank you. I do want to note that we have a little less than 20 minutes. We still have two more presentations. Mr. Constance, if you have a question, please, Ms. Helsner, please.
Yeah, thank you, two questions. One, in time, I've got up to, it's the question of public defenders. We have received this email, been from like a public office law firm suggesting we weren't living up to our requirements in the context of legal defense. So that's kind of a conversation I'd like to have, but maybe it's more than we want to do today. And the second topic is the question of the court backlog that came from the pandemic. I was in an unrelated conversation and found a 2019 case was just making it through the court. What's the status of the backlog?
Sure, so to address your first question, we have also received that letter and that's something that we are actively working on and something that we are actively addressing. To address the second question, could we go back to the slide that says timeline? Uh, yeah, phases of criminal case, yeah, right here. The one, so. The one, so for a very brief time after COVID, the court shut down jury trials. And so if there was no jury trial at the end, then for a while, there was no incentive for a defendant to take a deal on his case because, or his or her case, because there was going to be no sort of jury trials. Jury trials were only shut down for a few months. And the court required telephonic participation at all the rest of the court hearings that we do, and we continue to do those. Prosecution never shut down for COVID at all. We had a skeleton crew in for a while. We had a, our support staff took shifts. And then attorneys mostly worked remotely because they, the court wasn't letting us in. So we attended our hearings telephonically. That is mostly, the court has no more COVID-related orders. Nothing else is in effect. The court system, nothing has changed for them, so everything basically has opened back up. However, one thing that affected us is during this phase here on this slide, that's the pre-trial slide, the court has a rule called Rule 45 that says the case has to finish within four months. And during COVID and until 2021, Rule 45 was completely suspended. And so that four-month rule that kind of pushes cases to be resolved did not exist. So we continued during doing our job and sending offers for resolution, sending up discovery, arraigning cases. But there was not a lot of pressure to have cases be over. And the Rule 45 is a deadline against the government in the state and city cases. It's also a kind of a deadline that exists for the defense to convey their offer to their client, to review their discovery, to meet with their client about what they're going to do. So it serves as a pressure point for both parties. But because Rule 45 did not exist, there was a lot of asking for continuances, and this is mostly the defense asking for continuances for six months or eight months. And many of them also, I mean, you know, the pandemic affected us all. So for a while, defense attorneys weren't allowed to go into the jails to visit their clients. For a while, many defense attorneys worked solely from home. In prosecution, we switched from having paper files for every single case for thousands and thousands of cases a year to going paperless immediately when we shut down. And so that affected us some. It is mostly been cleared out on our end. So in terms of our work, I don't think we are behind. I think there are still a lot of cases in the pre-trial phase that didn't need to be, that for a while basically had no deadlines or extremely flexible deadlines. So it's not because the jury trials shut down for too long. It's because this pressure, this administrative rule pressure that existed, that exists now, did not exist for a while. And so a lot of those cases at that time just didn't move. And that affects us because there's also been, you know, a churning of the population. And so sometimes we have victims or witnesses during that time that have gotten sick from COVID or died from COVID or left the state or their phone number got turned off and they got evicted. And so there are a number of cases where we have lost the ability to prosecute due to going through the time period and also due to pandemic and due to world conditions. So I think when people say, "What's the status of the backlog?" It's not like there is one backlog and we have like ten thousand cases to get processed. It's more like that we're in a little bit of a bubble of case numbers because of the relaxation of some of these rules during COVID that the court did and that the court has re-imposed.
Mr. Costas, any follow-up?
So can I restate? That seems like, that was a long way of saying we're stopping.
Thank you. I do want to point out that we've got twelve minutes left. We still have two more presentations, so we will be going over 12:30 if we have to. So any other questions for Monica Elkhart? Oh, yeah, Pete, thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. You mentioned that the majority of cases are against individuals. Is there a percentage of these individuals that end up not making bail and are staying in jail awaiting trial? Do you know what that number might be?
I don't know what that number is right now. And it, you know, during the period of time, they might get out on bail initially and then go back in. And sometimes they might get on other charges. And that's sometimes hard for us to get an exact number for that. And they might go in and out multiple times during the penance of a case. I will say that in the last few years, the Court of Appeals has changed the way we look at bail. And there used to be a statute that said you can only look at, for a judge to determine bail, you can only look at their ability to show up for court and their ability to keep the public safe. Now there's a great deal of case law from the House Court of Appeals that says the court has to also look at whether they can pay their bail. And so the judges are taking that into consideration when setting bail. And we, of course, make arguments based on public safety. And we don't know the financial situation of the defendants, but the judges do and the defense attorneys do, and that is something that's greatly taken into consideration by the court when setting bail.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate you.
Yep.
All right, as soon as there are questions, we'll be moving on to Office of Emergency Management and regular updates. Thank you. Well, our schedule was supposed to give you ten minutes, but you have nine. So we'll probably move to extend. But Amanda, if you'd please introduce yourself, and then we'll go ahead and get started.
Hi, thanks for having us. My name's Amanda Loach. I'm the Director of the Office of Emergency Management. If you could go to our slides, please, I'd appreciate it. This is Audrey Gray. She's one of our four program managers. We're glad to be here with our public safety partners in AFD and APD and all of you guys. Since this is our first time presenting at this committee, we just want to introduce high-level overview of our work. And then we'll alternate over to Audrey, ready to talk to you about a really important function in emergency public information warning. So a question that we always get is, "What's the difference between the Emergency Operations Center and the Office of Emergency Management?" These are two very different things. The Office of Emergency Management is a small but mighty municipal office of six and a half employees. We just were lucky to get an intern. Our mission day to day is to support our community stakeholders in building up a suite of preparedness tools, response procedures, mitigation strategies, and recovery from all hazard emergencies and disasters. Our three goals are to build a culture of preparedness, ready the municipality of Anchorage for disasters, and expedite disaster recovery from the past and enhance mitigation strategies in the future. Slide please. In Gray's eyes, in the event of an emergency or a disaster from something like an avalanche or an earthquake, the Emergency Operations Center is a facility with systems that we activate and right-size to coordinate response support. Our OEM staff is absorbed by the Emergency Operations Center when it is activated, and we go where we're needed. The primary role of the EOC is to act and support field responders in command and control, such as what we did in the Highland Avalanche. However, the EOC can organize to manage incidents if needed, such as the five-hundred-plus days that we were activated for COVID-19. Slide please. So what does that look like in real life? We participate in an emergency or disaster lifecycle, including response, preparedness, mitigation, and recovery. For response, since the 2018 earthquake, we've had six Emergency Operations Center activations for an earthquake, two wildfires, pandemic, an avalanche, and a homelessness emergency. We develop 24/7 coverage through an EOC duty officer program, and we develop and maintain remote and hybrid EOC operational capability, including incident action planning. This is a very formal, specific process that allows us to analyze the situation and provide a common operating picture to move forward and solve problems. Preparedness is the next phase. We use preparedness to get ready for response before a disaster. This is also known as planning, training, and exercising. What does this look like? We do have the Anchorage Local Emergency Planning Committee. We recently added seven approved voting members, a bylaw update, regular quarterly work plan and meetings. And we are looking for a few members, if any of you are interested. We also update our guiding document, which is the Municipality Emergency Operations Plan. We recently did a five-year comprehensive update, and we look to adopt that and have it in front of you guys very soon. We also maintain a capability assessment document called an Integrated Preparedness Plan. That includes planning, training, and exercise over several years. And that plan seeks to close the gaps in capabilities that are identified across the city. Lastly, we implemented a National Incident Management System protocol for after-action and improvement planning. This protocol looks at exercises and real-life events and again, seeks to close capability gaps. Mitigation is the good fight in emergency management. This is what we do to eliminate or significantly reduce the impact of known threats. An example is seismic retrofits, floodplain management, et cetera. The municipality's All-Hazard Mitigation Plan was updated in 2022 and approved by all of you and FEMA. We are working with our partners to implement that plan, continuing with risk analysis, seismic, wildfire, avalanche. We also have a language access outreach program going. If you see our website, there's been a lot of updates to that to help with language access. And then we are also working with the Fire Department on wildfire mitigation projects. Last, but certainly not least, is disaster recovery. This has three main components: infrastructure restoration, support for individuals and family, and of course, mitigation. We have two open federal disasters, the 2018 earthquake and the COVID-19 pandemic, and two state disasters, the South Central Storm and the Highland Avalanche. Those are our high-level responsibilities and priorities. Audrey Gray is going to tell you a bit more about an important response highlight with our RAVE Alert and Warning System. Audrey is the lead organizer and awareness builder in the Emergency Operations Center. She's the Planning Chief there. And daily at OEM, she's the Training and Exercise Coordinator and the Public Information Officer.
Good afternoon, everybody. Thank you so much for having us. If you can move to the next slide, please. So I'm going to go a little high-level on our new Public Alert Warning System, RAVE Global Safety. So this has been a big change for our community. We had Everbridge Nixville for many, many years before we actually moved just this last year over to RAVE Global Safety. Next slide, please. So the background on this is basically our contract with NISL was up. Our contract with NISL was actually up a few years before we actually made this change. We opted not to change due to the fact that we were in the middle of the pandemic and we thought implementing a new alert warning system, not to mention the amount of time that we were spending on the actual response was maybe not the best move. So we waited until we were well after the pandemic and had an opportunity to RPL for a new system. Next slide, please. So the great part about RAVE that I am very excited about as the program manager for this is that it has more capabilities than NISL had. It's a little bit of a rough start, I want to say, for our community because they were so accustomed to receiving those alerts in very certain ways from NISL, and each system is very different. So the additional capabilities that we have is we actually have the ability to voice call folks, which is really fantastic. We have loaded all landlines in the municipality into our system, and we can actually physically voice call them. It will also use several short codes to send messages, which I know has created a little bit of confusion. And I'll go over short codes a little bit later and explain why that is important, that there are more than one. There's no limit on emergency text messages that MOA can send. This is our number-one biggest reason that we are very happy to have RAVE. We also have the ability to alert a specific area using a map. So if we have, let's say, an APD situation in one particular neighborhood and we only need to alert that particular neighborhood, we can actually target that message to just that neighborhood and not the entire municipality. In addition, we can attach pictures to messages. As you have likely seen, if you are enrolled in the new system, we've had some of the same people learns that have attached pictures to those messages. And then we also have the ability to actually poll the community. So if we are in the midst of an emergency where we need to get information back from the community, we can actually send a question out, receive a poll back. Next slide, please. The other thing about this is we do have the ability to preload certain things into the system to enhance our ability to reach everyone. And when I say everyone, I mean everyone. English, second language speakers, anybody who is deaf or hard of hearing, has visual impairments, we can reach them all with this system. We've already preloaded the top four additional languages into the system besides English, and that's Spanish, Mongao, Samoan, and Filipino. Those are all already preloaded in. We can load any messages in those languages as we need. A deaf and hard-hearing person's phone will actually vibrate when a text message is received, as well as if they have it set up on their phone, an LED light will be activated in the case that they receive notification. RAVE is also a company that works a lot with disability advocacy groups to validate compatibility with the most common assistive technologies used. And any legacy TTY or TDD devices are auto-detected, and those are also messaged. Next slide. All right, so you can go ahead and forward all the way to where we get all the short codes on there. I do this presentation for a lot of other folks. Keep going. You've got two more. There we go. All right, so these are all the potential short codes that RAVE may use to send you messages. This is important because of redundancy. Maybe one short code is particularly working well one day, so they can use the other five. We have, if you've received messages, you likely see that they have come from different short codes. So short codes are only to be used for emergency messages. Now, you know, you all have probably received messages on short codes from retailers. They're not supposed to do that. And you are going to see a big change happening over the course of the next year where they are going to have to go to ten-digit long codes, which is a typical ten-digit number. So you will start noticing those retailers phasing that out because these are only for emergency messages. Go ahead, next slide. So what I need the entire community to do, as well as all of you here in this room, is to go and set up your profile. RAVE runs on a platform called Smart 911. So if you go to our website, you will actually see the initial graphic that was on the front part of this. And you can click on that, and it will take you directly to Smart 911. You can load your children's schools in there. You can load your favorite watering hole if you want, your favorite grocery store that you're at a lot, whatever area that you want to receive messages about. The other part of it that's really great is for any other communities outside of Alaska or even inside Alaska that also use RAVE, you will receive their alerts once it finds your geocode of your phone in that jurisdiction. I do know that in the entire state of California is moving to the RAVE system. And so if you are traveling, going to Disneyland, wherever you're going, you will actually be able to receive their emergency messages. Next slide. So communication has been a really big part of our improvements at our office. And so we are continuing to work on those best practices. Implementing a new alert and warning system is one piece of that. But we are also creating those warning messages through our equal access project to use common warning messages that we may send. And we're translating those ahead of time with certified translators so we can just automatically put it in. We all know that Google Translate isn't always 100%. And so we want to make sure that we are doing at least those common messages as much as possible ahead of time.
Thank you. Real quick, I know we're at the end of our time. If anyone wants to give us a move to extend for fifteen minutes, we have one more presentation. Some move.
Second.
See you tomorrow. Thank you. We continue.
So you can go to the next slide. I'm literally done. That was good timing. All right, so thank you all very much for your time. And if you have any questions, we'll be glad to answer those.
I just have a real quick question. I know that our South Fork and Eagle River Valley Community Councils have been working independently. I've asked them to reach out, maybe in order to that, because, you know, there's thousands of homes and thousands of families back there that have choke points, whether it's the fire fire we saw with the Highland. And now those community councils have taken up their own initiative to try to create a community response. But is that something that you might be able to assist them with so they're not recreating the wheel? Who would they be best directed in order to figure out what they would do to come up with a really good neighborhood plan and services? with a really good neighborhood plan that services all those homes in that area? Thank you.
So, we've been working with a number of different community councils because that's exactly what we want people doing, is working on their own plans. So whether it's for your business, or your family, or your community, absolutely, we need every bit of support, and we do work with all of them. So if there's specific community councils or individuals that you'd like to point to us, we're happy to help with that.
Yeah, I'll probably make an arrangement to have you come speak if it helps, because there's individuals that have large tracts of land that have volunteered to house emergency supplies that we don't have to ship it in. They find the communities work really well together, so there's a lot of very helpful people.
Great.
Suzanne?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you both for being here and the work that you do in this important area. Two questions, or a question and a comment. I see on the department website that you can sign up to receive alerts, and that's for Rave, and that again, if people text 67283, correct, then they can also get signed up to receive those alerts?
Yes, they need to text the word "Anchorage" to the number 67283.
Great, thanks. And then my comment is just that there is an item before the Assembly on Tuesday at our regular meeting of March 7. It's item 14, the AO number 2023-26, and it proposes updating the Office of Emergency Management to reflect best practices and changes. And Amanda, you had worked on this back in 2019. It actually was an amendment attached to another item that actually didn't move, and I know we don't have much time, but I think that so much credit goes to you for doing this and for growing the department and developing the department in the way that you have, and thank you so much for that. Did you have anything that you wanted to add about this ordinance that's before the Assembly? I think it's pretty straightforward and hopefully non-controversial, and I think it hasn't been updated for a while, so it's very timely.
Yeah, thank you. It's just having the policy enabling us to do the things that we know we should be doing as a community. It was very vague earlier, and now it helps us understand what our roles and responsibilities are.
Mr. Conson?
Yeah, thank you. Quick question. You know, we're having a conversation across communities about vacancy rates and recruitment. Can you give us a brief on open positions and your plan for... Fiona?
Yes, I do have one position in my recovery team that is at the final stages of, with HR going through the background checks, and then I have... No, I have people... I've been lucky to, when I do have turnover, which is rarely, we've been pretty busy enough that we're sticking together pretty closely, but I do have one person that will be in March. But this disaster with so much work to do, we have actually been in a growth time for our group, which is expected for disasters, for resources to come in as a result of the disaster. So we're doing okay right now, thank you.
Any follow-up?
Thanks. Oh, that's good, thank you.
Thank you. Does he have any other questions? I appreciate both of you. Thank you for coming in today. All right, we have nothing under unfinished business, so moving on to new business. We have a presentation on draft facial recognition software ordinance, and I believe that's by Joey Sweet.
Yes, indeed.
Fantastic, Joey, I appreciate it. Go ahead.
Yeah, so this is what I've been talking about. It goes all the way back to the interview back during the special meeting on January 6th. This was always my number-one priority. It's specific, it's achievable, it makes sense once I kind of get into it here. I think really the purpose that I have in doing this presentation right now is kind of twofold. I want to explain what I'm referring to when I say facial recognition, and then I want to explain what the ordinance would actually look like. So, next slide, please. So, facial recognition has sort of crept into society. It hasn't really been something that is debated or discussed at any kind of length. It's now very pervasive. Obviously, people use it on their phones, and that has sort of normalized it, I think, in many ways, because a person interacts with it with some regularity just through consumer electronics. I want to make it clear right off the bat that that's not what I'm talking about. What I'm talking about is it's used in the public sector. So particularly, it's most applicable in the context of law enforcement, obviously, but not exclusively, which we'll get into in a little bit as well. Where it says "no federal regulations or guidelines," that's sort of created this gap, where because there's no federal regulation, there are bills in Congress that would address it, but they've not moved forward pretty much whatsoever. The private sector, though, has pushed forward with it regardless. So we have this gap between no real regulation or oversight, but we have vendors going out to law enforcement entities across the country and things like that. And so really, we're kind of in this Wild West phase where we don't have guidance or direction, but we're being solicited, right? In terms of how it actually works, every algorithm is going to work a little bit differently, but the basic concept is going to be the same across any platform. By some means, it maps a person's face either from publicly available data like your Facebook or Instagram photos, or a database such as driver's licenses, mug shots, things like that, and it assigns some sort of mathematical identifier to a person's face. The example I always use is the distance between a person's irises. The algorithm measures that distance and assigns that distance a numeric identifier, not just a regular number like 10 or 11, but a digit that is itself like 1,000 digits long. That way, it's unique enough to not be confused, hopefully, with someone else. A person could look at two people's faces and not be able to discern, of course, the distance between their pupils, but a computer can, and once it has that distance, it gives it a number, and the number is long enough that it's not going to be confused. Oftentimes, this ends up being not sufficient, we'll say, because algorithms are only as good as the data that they are trained off of. So a lot of these algorithms end up being built by teams that are subject to implicit bias, and if you only put in certain types of data, you're only going to get data for... you're only going to get results that match the data that gets put in. And because there are no federal regulations, what ends up happening, the slang term for it, is garbage in, garbage out. So, off of that, next slide, please. So because there's no federal regulation and we have this garbage-in, garbage-out problem, oftentimes facial recognition algorithms in the databases they use end up having inaccuracies, and those inaccuracies disproportionately impact people of color. Because it's all trained off of algorithms, this problem also is self-reinforcing because of things like confidence levels. Essentially, the algorithm thinks that it has a match, even if it doesn't, and because it thinks it does, it learns the wrong thing. So if you have a false positive, but the algorithm thinks that it's accurate, it has just taught itself the wrong information. The result of this ends up being things like the case of Robert Williams, a black man living in a suburb of Detroit who was arrested in his front lawn as a result of a false positive. There was traditional surveillance that showed a man robbing a jewelry store about 18 months prior to the arrest, and any human being can plainly tell they aren't the same person, but a facial recognition database believed that they were the same, and the police arrested him off of that information. I could do this entire presentation just on that case, but that's one example. There are three famous examples, but that's the first one chronologically that has taken place. There's a state government office called the National Institute for Standards and Technology. They ran a report at the end of 2019 that looked at several dozen of the most prominent facial recognition algorithms, and every single one was subject to bias and misidentification. Sometimes, it was as low as 10 times inaccurate for people of color. The worst was 100 times more inaccurate. So, in the interest of time, next slide. There is no real current policy. My big concern is too chromed. There's sort of the racist effect concern, but there's also just regular privacy, and to the effect of privacy. That last bullet point is probably the most important, because even as technology improves, we still have to ask ourselves, is this something that we actually want as a value? And to that point, its potential for misuse and abuse is, I think, plainly obvious. We have had, just in the last month and a half, an example from status quo surveillance of systems being abused for political ends. Imagine how much worse that case could have been if the municipality were using facial recognition. So, in the interest of time, next slide, please. As it relates to the actual language of the ordinance, it would prohibit the municipality from acquiring and using facial recognition technology, while at the same time allowing certain carve-outs, because there are legal requirements for, say, APD to work with the FBI. The FBI, of course, has its own facial recognition database. There's also a carve-out for personal devices. The community provides iPhones for work purposes and things like that. You would be allowed to use Apple's Face ID to unlock a municipal-owned phone, things like that. It would also create a specific structure that could be used in the future if a municipal entity wants to come to the Assembly and say, "We think that we can use this, and it can be done responsibly and effectively." It would give them the ability to come forward to the Assembly and do that, but only under those conditions. In the interest of time, you can go ahead and move forward. Overall, I want to protect civil liberties, prevent the municipality from using what I think is currently a harmful technology, and I think it's a perfectly legitimate concern to try to avoid potential litigation. I mentioned there were three known instances of someone being arrested for a crime they had nothing to do with based off of faulty facial recognition. In each of those three cases, the person who was arrested sued their local government and won millions of dollars. I know it doesn't strike a person, perhaps, is the most important part, but I think that's a perfectly legitimate consideration as well. And then with that, I'll turn it over for questions.
Thank you. Any other questions? Paul?
What are we going to see this?
Excellent question. I think I'm still too new to really be able to give a reliable answer.
Yeah, so we've got a working draft right now that we're doing. So, I will get back to you today, but I just had time to get to it. We've got some other irons in the fire, but it is, I mean, it's... The draft is in pretty good shape, I think. I think we need to craft some more awareness clauses and things like that, but I think we've got good working definitions and a good idea of the kind of enforcement and exceptions we want to include in.
Great. If you don't have a third cost must or already, I'd be definitely interested. Thank you.
Suzanne?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, Joey, have there been conversations that you know of, like at the municipal level here, about using this technology? I'm just curious if there's been any conversations under Deputy Chief Casey's still here and the acting municipal attorney as well. I'm just curious. Thank you.
I met with the APD Chief and Deputy Casey's back in late January, early February or so, and I was told it wasn't exactly a budget priority. And I think that's another reason to do this now, is before it gets to a point where some vendor comes to us and tries to sell us their magical elixir to cure-all for crime and then find out if it doesn't work, right? I don't... Policies are so often reactive. I don't want there to be an incident, and then we respond to it, right? I want to do this now.
Thank you. I know we're just about out of time, but, you know, I did have a group of community members with very valid public safety concerns come to me, and one thing that they were interested in having me do for them was try to appropriate some funds for cameras, surveillance cameras, and they expressed interest. You know, they had done research on a couple of different companies, and they said, "No, we want to do something that can even do facial recognition." And I, you know, to me, that was like, "Oh, no, I don't want to support that because there's so many privacy concerns there." I think we also need to be consistent with our strong state laws, you know, our right to privacy. So anyway, thank you for this work.
Thank you, Joey. I know that we're a little over time, and I always like to give a lot for anybody here who's from public testimony. Is anybody in line or anybody here just show up and give testimony? Seeing none, we're at the end of our agenda. Do I hear in German? Move your German. Thank you.